It was so memorable.
Remember how it was written?
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
No idea what it is.
What are you doing there? All right, I have five thirty on my clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. We'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pledge of Allegiance two to five, United States and Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every nation.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All four.
Aye.
Against any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All in, motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we're gonna have open forum now. Anyone who'd like to speak, come up to the podium, state your name, and uh, hear what you got to say.
Hi, Deborah Olson, uh, six hundred Dewey Street. I'm concerned that our city administrator has okayed, um, the waiving of the INI penalty on the property on six forty-fourth Avenue North. Um, you know, it's already been submitted for the twenty, twenty twenty-two, um, full amount was submitted to the county to be included in the county payment as a special assessment. And so you're waiving that at the request of, um, what is going to be the current owner, which is the mortgage company, because the resident is in a, um, bankruptcy, chapter thirteen, and the mortgage company will be receiving the property back in their possession. Why are we giving special considerations to either, uh, as in the, um, letter was a realty company, whether it be the mortgage company that is taking back the mortgage? I don't think it's fair to the other residents that are also getting the special assessment added on to their taxes.
The way our city addresses that is they have the right to bring it in front of the council. That does not make it a done deal.
That's correct.
It's just their right.
They have had it.
And it would have been the second, the mortgage holders that defaulted could have come and requested the same thing. That's a lot different than anybody making a decision unilaterally to do it.
Unilaterally, it's already been done. It's past the, um, amount of days that that person can waive that, uh, penalty. And I'm sure that a lot of people that are getting the INI, I'm one of them. I pay it every month though. Only because the person that was doing the inspection could not get the cap off of my pipe. I'm not gonna spend a thousand dollars to have a plumber come in and torch my pipe so they can put a camera down it. There is many other people that are getting the INI penalty. But when a bank comes and requests it, that's a whole different matter. That should not be waived for a bank or a Realtor.
Why haven't you come and asked for a waiver? That's your right.
Oh, I didn't know that was my right. I just sucked it up and paid it.
And not knowing is not a reason, and I'm sorry, you need to contact people who would know whether it be the, right here in the city office, or even if you feel you don't trust the city office, then feel free to go to a county or a lawyer. But it was your right as well to come before and request the same kind of thing.
I'm not upset on my situation. I don't feel it's fair to those that do pay it to allow the city to waive the penalty for a bank or a property management company.
And the rest of that-
It's a little different.
Okay, but we're gonna discuss the rest of this later on in the meeting.
That's right, and that's why I'm just avoiding my disagreement with that.
So I think we're kinda, yep. Yep, thank you. Anyone else to speak? All right, next, we're gonna have Foley Economic Development Committee, I guess it's Brandon.
It is. Good evening. Uh, thank you Mayor and council members for allowing me to speak. Uh, Brandon Voight with, uh, Chair of the Economic Development, uh, Committee here in Foley. Uh, one of the things, are you pulling that up, Sarah?
Yeah.
I'll wait for you to grab that. All right, so in our efforts, uh, to continue to, uh, make the town economically thrive, uh, whether it be through beautification or other economic development, um, uh, projects, uh, one we've come up with here, this most recently, uh, is, uh, noticing the welcome signs both on the east and the west, uh, being weathered, uh, damaged, uh, and quite frankly dated. With that, uh, also comes then the imposition of where they're currently located, uh, one of which has been asked to be removed uh, due to it being on private property, uh, which is the one on the west end, uh, and the one on the east end, uh, there is a concern with the lease end, uh, coming to date. This is the one that would be in front of the church. Um, and, uh, you know, really, when you think about, uh, the welcome signs and what it promotes or presents about our city, uh, both for those that are passing through and those that, you know, live here, uh, you know, it's, it's meant to be able to come through, uh, you know, see where you're coming in to, feel good about the place you're entering, uh, so our welcome signs, I think speaks volumes, uh, to, uh, those passing through and those that live here. Uh, and it's time for an update, uh, to, uh, not only catch up with what other cities are doing, uh, but really put our best foot forward for those that are, um, entering our city when they, when they do. Uh, next slide. So the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee is to do something similar, uh, to what we did, uh, a couple of years back with the, uh, mural, uh, project right outside the door here, uh, where we would, uh, put in a grant to the CMBA uh, to ask for, uh, project money, uh, to seek out artists that would come and give us some, uh, designs and ideas, uh, based off of, uh, the history of Foley, uh, maybe even play off of the mural a little bit, uh, to help significantly reduce those costs, which would then turn into then, uh, permission to get a grant, or apply for a grant, uh, that would allow for us to actually help fund, um, part of that project to be put in place. Uh, we're proposing, um, uh, both signs to be replaced, however, actually focusing on moving them, uh, away from where they currently are. Uh, one, due to the, uh, current situation with, uh, private property and lease end, but also to account for the future growth of the city. Uh, so, uh, one would be, uh, closer to, uh, Sable Inn area is what we were thinking originally. Uh, and then the other, uh, further down on the east end, just past, uh, like the urbanization, uh, develop, new development area that we put out there with the, uh, lights and, and past the roundabout there. Um, so what we'd be asking then from you would be, uh, one, uh, permission to pursue, uh, and, and allow for us, uh, to, uh, apply for that project art grant, uh, to get things moving, uh, and, and see where we can take it from there, uh, and then, uh, permission, uh, to act on, um, on behalf, uh, not necessarily of the city, uh, but be able to, uh, use the city as fiscal, uh, fiscal agent, uh, again, similar to, uh, the mural project, uh, to allow for us to continue this project. And I will take questions from Sarah. Anybody having questions?
Uh, yeah, is there a possibility to get kind of, some kind of a mock-up or a, a, a drawing of what we're gonna be looking at?
Yeah, so the, the point of the art grant, of the project grant is to, uh, first seek out, uh, artists, uh, that would be willing to take on a project such as this. Uh, and if, if anyone's familiar with the, uh, mural project, uh, four artists would be selected, uh, and they would put in some, some mock-up iterations as far as what they could foresee it looking like or, and doing with it. Uh, that doesn't mean that we have to necessarily go with those particular designs. Um, uh, once we have a good idea of what they're doing, they'll actually, uh, create, uh, a more, uh, realistic three D, uh, version or something more artistic for us to see. Uh, that could go through, say, a, a survey or voting process similar to the mural, uh, where we can get the city, uh, involved and, and the community involved on which one they, they prefer, uh, and, and have it really be more of a, a community effort. So, the first part is just getting through that step and allowing for that to happen, doesn't mean that anything as far as actually creating or, or deciding on one in particular.
Sarah?
Okay. If I could, if you recall when we had the business expo and we displayed those different concepts for the mural, we're looking at doing something very similar to that. So we would first do the one smaller grant to solicit for proposals or artists to submit the ideas, and then we could look at doing some type of voting or, you know, however we wanna make that selection. Um, the idea with that is to, um, you know, let them, they can come up with some, maybe some creative thinking and, you know, things that might represent Foley well, but then it also, like, we can, we can get the input from the public however we, we see is the best. You know, we had them in the library, we had them at the expo. Um, it really gives the chance for the public to weigh in on that and what they like. Um, and it was really, really well received last time. We had a lot of great feedback from people that came to look at the different ideas and then voted.
Yeah, and I, and I will, you know, say there's, there's certainly gonna be a cost involved. Uh, some of these grants, uh, as far as the project itself, um, the public art grant, uh, you know, there is money there that we can apply for to help actually fund the construction of the project. Uh, but between that, um, you know, leveraging grants, uh, other businesses and local organizations, that is something you're seeing a lot more of, uh, in these cities that are putting up newer signs, newer, bigger signs, uh, as you will see, you know, help supported by, you know, such and such cities of Lyons and, and the Chamber and, of course, the city itself. Uh, so it, it's what helps make these, um, a little more cost effective. Uh, and that's kind of the point of what we're trying to do here is, is to assist or help with that.
So do, do you have to apply, say, apply for a grant before we see what can be donated locally?
Uh, ye- yes, so we would apply for the project grant first. That would just help us get the, the artistic piece, uh, going and pay for those, pay the stipends to those artists to, to put something in front of us. Uh, and as far as, um, we, once that's decided or we feel that there's something there, uh, we would then simultaneously apply for the, for the public art grant, which is dollars that would go towards paying that artist then, uh, for their services of creating, uh, or constructing, uh, the, the signs themselves. Uh, and at that point, uh, during that public art grant, uh, we would also then already be looking for businesses, organizations, the city, uh, what everyone, um, is willing to commit to. We would also have an idea after the project art grant, that, that first session, we'd have an idea of what that would look like as far as cost as well. Uh, so we would know then by the end what that project's gonna cost. We would then apply for the project art grant or the public art grant and, uh, and start seeking, uh, donations and things of that nature and who would be willing to help support, depending on the cost. Uh, what that cost is, is, is unknown at this time. I couldn't even give you an estimate.
So do we have locations secured or we still are in that process as well?
We would still be in that process as well.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Sarah?
Mr. Mayor.
Sarah?
Um, we did, uh, have a meeting with MINDOT. We can also, we have the option of putting it within MINDOT right away. So we did sit down with our signage individuals and get that information. So we're not just looking at private, we're looking at possibly public or state right away for the location of these signs. So we have a lot of different options to look at. And if I can just also add, we, we talked about this at the staff level too. We need to do something with those signs. Um, they're just not in very good shape and like they need to be moved. So, um, from a staff perspective, we probably would be coming back for some type of investment or some type of funds to help with this initiative. So this might be a good opportunity to leverage some additional grant dollars.
Do we have to meet any kind of restrictions as far as size?
There is some. It's usually the location, um, where it has to be on, like, where the ditch is on the other end. Um, and there were, were a couple of different items that we talked through at the MINDOT meeting, but-
So if we put them in MINDOT right away, they would specify?
Yep, yeah. But it really, there's actually quite, I actually thought it was much more flexible than I anticipated. Um, but there's, we have a lot of right away locations to consider too, so.
Do we need to motion anything or?
Yeah, um, we would request a motion to, uh, approve the city being the fiscal agent, which we have done in the past. I don't have any concerns with doing that. We basically, sometime that I would have to put in, and then we would run all the funds, the grant funds would be received by us. We write the checks out and so forth.
So can I get a motion using the city as a fiscal agent for the Economic Development Committee to pursue, uh-
So moved.
-a grant?
Second.
Any other discussion? All aye or all say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right, discussion on two thousand twenty-three proposed Winter Fest event. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of that? Yes, there is. Name where you're from, please.
Hi, I'm Louisa. I'm, um, originally from England, as you probably noticed. Um, I'm a Foley resident and I own the building next door to Mike's barber shop. Um, so, where's my thing? Here we go. Um, so each Christmas I look out the window onto Fourth Avenue and I see, I don't see any, anything going on other than the Christmas ornaments on the lamp posts. And so, and it's kind of sad and I think, uh, it'd be lovely to see something festive out there for Christmas. Um, so thinking on this, I, I posted a poll on Foley Community Happenings, see if anyone else was interested. And I got, um, over a hundred people responded, and many people, um, commented and were really excited by the idea. So we formed a small committee, um, which I'm representing, um, to see if we can make this happen. Um, um, we so far only have an outline of ideas. Um, um, here's, here's what we have so far. Um, the event name would be Foley Winter Fest. Uh, proposed event dates would be December first, second, and third. Um, the event location would be, uh, Fourth Avenue to Main Street, to John, on John Street, whatever works. Um, activities such as, we thought it'd be nice to have a tree lighting in the town, um, to kick off the season. And to have, um, on those three days, to maybe have a parade, to, um, have window contests, arts and crafts, um, food and drink vendors, petting zoo, um, uh, uh, ornaments and gifts, all sorts. Um, and on the last day to have Santa come with the fire department. Um, so we have a committee that's formed and we, we meet on the first Thursday of the month at Mr. Jim's at six P M. If anybody wants to join, um, we're happy to take questions. This is Bill. He's part of the committee too.
So this would be an evening event during, this would happen during the evening time?
We thought it would be, start, it'd be day and early evening, yeah, because we want to make the most of the lights and everything.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about this?
I think it's a great idea.
I've got one more thing to add.
Go ahead.
I'm, uh, I'm on the board of, uh, directors for the Chamber and there is a possibility that we could fall under the umbrella as a committee for the Chamber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There's a possibility that this could fall under the Chamber as a committee.
Okay.
So you, you said there would be daily and evening events or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, hopefully a parade, an evening, early evening parade, um, maybe on the last day of the festival.
Hmm.
Um, and carol singers and, you know, but, uh, the first day I'd like to have a tree lighting, a big tree in, in the town, which would kind of be the start of the event. Um, and then, you know, we don't know h- how many vendors are interested yet or, but, um, is there anything else you, any other thoughts you have?
Sounds like a fun deal to me.
Are we looking at closing roads down?
Yes, probably. Um, um, it probably would mean Fourth Avenue and, uh, Main Street.
Down to John Street.
Okay.
Or John Street.
Yep.
Public Works?
Um, I'll just start maybe while you get the mic. Um, just a couple of things. We, we suggested maybe they reach out to the civic group, um, or some of the other community organizations that have done events. There are a number of, you know, insurance liability, um, restrooms, you know, the snow removal, I guess. I don't know how that would handle, be handled. I'll let him speak to that. But, um, th- some of those, like the civic group has been through those planning these significant festivals and so forth. So I think they plan on attending a meeting and discussing with them, just so they can make sure to check all those boxes. Um, and I guess I'll defer to you on-
Good evening. Uh, snow removal is gonna be our biggest thing, you know? When you get a snowfall and you have stuff-
Well, we're proposing December first, second, and third, so it won't be too, it will be sort of the, the beginning of winter.
The heavy snowfall time of the year, yeah.
But, but, you know, famous last words.
There would need to be county approval to close the county state aid roadway too. So it wouldn't just be the city council. It would also have to be addressed at the county level.
Right.
Uh, question in the audience?
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, kind of piggyback on the comment there about, uh, accepting baseball for the civic group. Uh, are you going to be partnering or, you know, being athlete in Foley Days or whatever?
Yes.
Yeah, we're wanting to, I can't, I can't, I'm not sure enough, you know, that's just something that's on there. Yeah, that could, uh, cut a lot of corners if, uh, you, uh, follow their model a little bit. If it sounds like you want to pull talk the same for-
Mm-hmm. Uh, yes, similar sort of thing, yes.
And if, if we did fall under the umbrella of the Chamber of Congress, they, their insurance for, uh, would cover the event.
Just a couple more. Just something else that I, um, would need, we would also need where, what the city staff, um, participation would be in this type of event. We do Fund Days. That's a very expensive event. Takes a lot of man-hours from the city staff. We would need some direction on how the council, um, would request city staff to be involved in this. Are we responsible for all garbage? Are we responsible for cleanup? You know, those type of things. So that's just other things that we need to think about and have a discussion on too.
Yeah. Understood.
I would say have a meeting or two and then come back and see where, see if it's gonna fly or, or what you're, where, where we're at with it at that point that we can start.
Our next meeting is coming up, uh, Mr. Jim's at six P M. on Thursday, March second.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
I also think I should let everybody know, I've been adding guidance for them so that when they do have meetings, they progress in an orderly manner, and I intend on con- continuing until it reaches a point where my being on the council would com- be compromised. And they all know that I'm there as guidance and nothing else.
We appreciate your advisory, Steph.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Advocates for Health, Joel Vogel is here tonight or not?
I don't think he's here.
Okay.
So we'll skip over that.
Department reports, please, Katie McMillan.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, event that we have coming up is on February sixteenth, Fun with Police. That's here at City Hall. Um, it's for the younger, um, kids K through six, but council, you're invited to come and see. Um, kids come, we, it's mostly anti-bullying based or kindness based events that we have. The sheriff's office joins in with us. Um, so that is here from four P M. to six, and then we also send the kids away with pizza, so. Um, for the stat report, we had three hundred and fifty-four calls you, for the month of January. Usually January is our slowest month. Just to recap other years, in two thousand twenty-two, we had two hundred and ninety-one, tw- and twenty-twenty-one, we had two eighty. In two thousand twenty, we had two fifty-five. So we're almost, you can see that we're almost a hundred more than two thousand twenty. Um, some of the things, driving conduct is up. Um, a lot of that is reminder, people, stop signs, you have to stop at them. Um, we had a lot of traffic stops for those. Our child ICRs, which most of them are at the school related, they're, they are up. And domestics assaults, and that's where I do apologize for being late. I was at one of those this evening already. Our domestic assaults are up. Um, it's very alarming that they have increased before. They are, are dangerous calls that we respond to. But on a positive note, gas drives offs are down, so that's good. Um, other than that, there is nothing more that I have for you unless you have something for me. Um, we are doing interviews for, um, that part-time position next Monday. The Personnel Committee is, we're getting together on Monday and we're going to be conducting those.
I have one question on the domestics.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do, I mean, if they get in the system as a domestic, the abuser, if there is an obvious abuser, is going to jail. But a lot of times it ends up that they have to go to a- But a lot of times it ends up that they have to go to a anger management or they've got. How do we handle that or does the county handle that?
That is all done through the courts. The mandated, the judge determines if they have to get anything mandated. There, that's nothing else.
And then it would go through the county programs that are already in place.
Correct. That has nothing to do with us.
What do we do for the children?
Yep, for that, we, all our reports, if there's individual, if there's children involved in any of the reports that we deal with, we send them all over to Benton County Child Protection or Human Services and they review and they get involved as needed.
Thank you, Katie. You've got a heck of a job.
Anyone else have questions?
Three thirty on Monday?
Yes, three thirty is when the first one starts on next Monday for the interviews, yeah.
All right. Thank you. City Engineer, Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm a member of the City Council. Um, tonight, just a quick update on where we're at with the trunk I twenty-three pedestrian crossing push buttons. Um, I did speak with our traffic engineer and showed him some pictures of the two intersections. Uh, as we talked about before, Broadway does appear to be a good candidate for the solar. Um, and then, but the uh roundabout at Eighth, uh, he's still a little, little concerned with the trees that are left by that house there. On the, it would be the southwest quadrant of the intersection. Um, and so he's, he's recommending that we go with that hardware connection. And there is a close um cabinet there to make that connection. Uh, on a different note, I guess there was some conversation um between Sarah and, and Mindat, uh, the last probably a week or so. And I'll let her update you.
Um, I had a long conversation with Russell Felbaum, um, who's been our um District Three representative um from the beginning of the formulation of this project. And the question I had posed to Russell was why the design and pre-design was not eligible for coverage with the bonding and T A funds. T A funds are not eligible, but I pulled the old language from the bonding bill back in two thousand seventeen when we, we applied. And it specifically indicated pre-design and design costs associated with pedestrian crossings, all the items that we had listed in that project. Um, in the final version, it went to an omnibus um bonding bill. Um, there was a summary version listed there, but I didn't know if Russell had that final language. Um, he indicated he still did not believe Mindat would cover that um or do that internally because they never do internal engineering for these push button signs. But he did agree to check on if we could be reimbursed by those funds. Because according to our figures, we think there's significant money left yet of the, those bonding proceeds and the T A application funds. And Russell agreed there is funding still remaining to cover costs. So he did not give me a straight answer. He is checking back with some higher ups in Mindat to see if there is any way for us to be reimbursed those costs. I wish I had a firm answer, but I don't at this point.
How many push buttons are you gonna need on the roundabout or how many signs?
Three.
Okay.
Three, yep.
And three push buttons?
Yep, and three buttons, one for each, one for a pole.
Okay.
And then two at Broadway.
Well, until we can find out if we're gonna get reimbursed, I don't see us going forward with this.
That, that's up to you, council. Um, I, the one thing I will say, Mindat did say is they do expect quite a lead time on ordering these things.
Well, they have. I drove through it today. There is uh signage on Broadway and there is signage in the roundabout. Not, I mean, that's the very minimum what's up there, but that meets standards, so. Cause they just have little signs that are buried in the snow that says yield to pedestrians.
Personally, our Broadway and our roundabout are where our kids cross twenty-three. I've walked twenty-three, I've driven twenty-three and felt like praying to get across. And I feel with the number of children that cross. And granted, I will also say they're older kids. They're our high school kids. They're, I haven't seen a lot of younger kids. That doesn't minimize the danger on those two spots. It, it, they come down twenty-three and they can be going at a clip. And I just feel our kids, I generally don't like spending money. But we have to think about our young people. They're, they're in danger.
Well, we wouldn't be spending money. We should get reimbursed for this. But if we're not getting reimbursed, then we're gonna be spending money. And with the sidewalks not even being open, there's not a clear direction for anyone to walk or where they're supposed to be. So until spring and the rest of the project get completed, I don't, I'd say we just gotta be in a holding pattern on this one. Any other questions for Jared?
I have one.
Yeah.
If uh Russell does get back to Sarah in the next week or two, um, does she have permission to move forward with our agreement and so we can get going? Like she mentioned, uh, there is a, a lead time, a material lead time issue that we may be looking at here. Um, is that, or do you want just bring it back to the council or the next meeting whenever that does happen?
I think we should bring it back.
Bring it back, yeah.
Do we know the lead time on the ordering?
When we had our Mindat meeting, I think it was, was it November, Mark?
October, November.
October, November. He was thinking that if we had everything to him as far as plans, estimate specs by Christmas, he could have that by May. Um, so that's.
Last Christmas?
No, as in like.
Like next Christmas?
No, as.
No.
As in two months ago.
Yeah.
Last Christmas.
Last fall.
Like a month and a half ago.
Okay. And then by May.
Yep.
At that point.
So like a.
We might get.
Simplified a, a five, six month lead time.
Okay.
Well, we still have to see if we're gonna get reimbursed on it.
Right. As far as Mindat's concerned, that is adequate for what, they wouldn't leave it that way otherwise.
Yeah, I, I think it is.
What's there now is adequate and then we're just looking at the safer ways to school with the flashy beacons.
I, I do know that the, that federal safety audit, those were very important components. Um, I also, we received a lot of feedback from the public on, on wanting those improvements. So I would hope we can find some way to make sure they get installed at some point. But I, I do agree that what's there is probably meeting the minimum standard.
Nea's saying that the, Russell is saying that the construction of, you know, the, the material, the installation of it is covered though.
Yes, yes. There is no concern or question about the construction, the actual physical signs, that portion being covered. That has been confirmed to be covered. By Nea and Jared, yeah.
You just need to find out if they're gonna pay for the.
This, this stuff that's up here, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I'd say bring it back next meeting.
Yep.
And we'll have an answer.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Public Works, Mark Papenfuss.
Good evening. Welcome, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Council. Uh, not a lot on the public work side. Continuing, like I say, snow's taken a lot of our time. Still going around and cleaning hydrants and intersections, stuff like that. Um, we started, I think, well, a few months back, I talked about the lead and copper thing that's due in twenty twenty-four sometime. We have to inventory every water service. We did start working on that fairly aggressive in our other time. Um, trying to get an inventory going. Gonna use that new Silver Smith system you guys bought for us and make everything into there and hopefully we can pull a database out of there. So we are working on it. There's a law going through, what, the House Legislature, one of them, that's gonna pay cause it's gonna force people to change, replace their sewer, uh, private water services. There's a law going through the legislature now that pay a hundred percent of private, fifty percent of gut public.
Yes.
Or the lit, uh glitch with it. Private has to claim that as income. So now they're back to the drawing board down there in the big house. So hopefully they'll get rid of that and then this will move on and we're still, you know, a year out on that. But if we never, for, we're gonna go north, you know, if we do in a couple of years, it'll affect us. So we do want funding, cause, so we'll keep up to date on that. Um, just a quick update, water use. Last year, a dry year, we pumped uh four million less than the year before. Four point eight percent. And we build out four point four million less in water use, five point four percent. So not sure if it's, I assume it's a sewer rate. I mean, who knows what, but sewer rate, year before was only uh one point nine. So the numbers are about the same, two point two and one point eight now, two point two down. And I can clean up this chart. I just never had a cleaner chart. I'd hoped to have something to you, but.
Yeah, um, the reason we're, we're bringing this up to you is we just want you to make, be aware that that does change some of our revenue projections and we're gonna have to closely watch that and make maybe other adjustments if needed. Um, cause that's significant in the overall scheme.
I, uh, yeah, I'm not an advocate for the sprinkler thing. If that's why people are going less or not, I'm, it's another day's topic. Um, other than that, anything on the public work side? I do some fire stuff. Okay, um, in your packet, you had information on our uh Assistance the Firefighter twenty twenty-one grant that we got last year. Uh, there's two quotes in there for a purchase of a uh S C B A air compressors uh system, storage bottles, and a bottle fill station. Like permission to purchase the Bauer compressor from Alex Air Apparatus in the amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred four dollars, zero cents. And that will be reimbursed. It was in my email, I believe, wasn't it? It was forty, it was about, we had forty-two thousand, we had to spend about forty-five. We are updating our bottle fill station also, so it's the same as that is from the old system. So that'll come out of equipment fund, so we're gonna have.
It was towards the beginning, if you're looking for it. I think it got mixed in with the other fire stuff.
It's like the first, yeah.
Yep, it's on here. Yeah, I'm just, if you're looking for the quotes, it's just towards the beginning.
But this being at this price, we uh, I gotta, you know, it's gotta run by you guys, even though we got the grant that it's gonna pay us, like I said, the forty-two thousand, we have to spend forty-five thousand. The difference is those bottom two. Yeah, I would like a motion on that at that price.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Fifty-two, five oh four, zero, zero.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all of four.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, next one, Assistance the Firefighter Grant twenty twenty-two. These grants are a year behind due to the uh COVID, whatever, put them back, so they're trying to catch them up now. That application is open till February tenth. We've already submitted our grant, which you could deny, but uh, if we were to get. We are doing a regional grant on there with Rice Fire Department for the replacement of all of our eight hundred megahertz radios. They are uh fifteen years old. That is end of life on those radios, so they are eligible for the grant. Um, if you guys have that, there's a memorandum of understanding we had to do with Rice, City of Rice and City of Foley Fire Departments. Um, all the prices are on the back of that. If somebody really figures it out, the FEMA calculator does not come to a true five percent, but that's the number we have to. If, that's the numbers that had, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be closer to eleven thousand something than whatever. These are the numbers that we had to attach. Yes, we caught it. So basically what we have to do is tonight on this is all we need is. Huh? Okay, yeah, just that you guys have to be aware, if we get this grant, we are gonna be responsible for about eleven thousand dollars of this four hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant, so.
And if we don't get the grant?
If we don't get the grant, we are all three hundred dollars for writing the grant. So, and ours was submitted last Saturday, actually, Saturday before or whenever it was, Saturday before we submitted the grant.
We have to have motion on that, right?
No.
No, we already did.
Uh, only other thing I have is I think you all know our Assistant Chief Nader retired last Friday, whenever it was. So we'll start the process of filling that position in the near future here and then uh bring something back to you guys. And I don't know a timeframe on what we're gonna do. We haven't even sat down and talked about it out there yet, so. Kind of wanna look at the whole big picture, what's going on, so.
Anyone else have questions for Mark? Thank you. Sarah Bun.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a few items. Uh, the first would be um a discussion on the rental license renewal periods. Um, this actually came up by our building official who also does our rental inspections. And we are currently on a biannual inspection period. We had a little bit of shuffling with the schedule with COVID cause we couldn't get into houses and units for a long period of time. But one of the items that she brought up was, um, since we've had the rental program in place for such a long period of time, she said a lot of these units that she goes and do hardly have anything to fix. You know, they've done a really good job of keeping them up. We still have obviously some units that need more time and attention. But she recommended we consider um changing that rental inspection period to three years. Um, that really, when we do the rental licensing process, we charge fees to cover the costs associated with it. So it works out to be a wash really when we do the program. Um, and so she just was wondering what the council's thoughts were on changing that to a three-year period. Um, it would also, it would, it would give those um current licenses more time in between since a lot of them, majority of them are doing a pretty good job. But then it would also just eliminate some of that work on her end and, and staff's end too. If it's, is it really adding value, I guess is what we're questioning it. Um, we would still obviously address new rentals or any rental complaints, those type of items. Those obviously still need to be addressed and handled. Um, so that wouldn't change that. You still need a rental license. It's just those people that are currently licensed and then renew, that period would change. If that's something you're interested with, I would just like direction. I can provide a code amendment and bring that back to you. I just didn't wanna go through that if there wasn't an interest of doing it.
Is that just multi-unit housing? Or is it also individual housing? It's both.
It's both, correct, yep. Um, and we have, we're, we've seen more of the single-family homes sell and go out of rental market now. Um, just with what we saw in the housing market the last couple of years, but um it affects both. So um your big apartment buildings are single, we have a couple duplexes, they all are required to license. We do exempt family members that are, like, so if, you know, mom and dad are in a home and the son lives there, that would be an exempt situation.
Another question that I noticed when I was visiting a friend at one of our multi-units. It was a false alarm, but it was one that goes off because it appeared to be triggered in an area that was not like a unit. It was probably a hall or electrical something. And almost all the fire extinguishers were out of date, not by a week or a month or two months. But more than a year. That's too long. Somebody is dropping the ball. And they got over there right away when they found out that, I mean.
I, I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I think they're supposed to be annually inspected. So it really would follow side of, you know, we, we wouldn't catch it even if that's every other year would be the only time we would catch it. You know, we wouldn't have any reason unless there was complaint to be in that unit, but I believe it's every year. That's when ours are at least done.
It's annually.
So you, the extinguishers that are in the halls and in the entryways aren't inspected annually?
Well, that's on the.
That's on the owner.
That's on the owner.
Is what we were saying.
And he's on his owner, honor to do it.
Correct.
So.
Go ahead, Mark.
Unless we're there for a call or somebody does a complaint, you know, we have a reason to be in there.
Okay.
For them to see them.
Cause that's what happened. You, you guys came because the fire alarms weren't working properly.
Was this a while back?
It was last summer.
Okay, that's been addressed. We got all, I mean, I, we got paperwork, all their extinguishers are done, all their alarm systems, we made them go through. And all their alarms and their sprinkler system has all been documented and will fall, you know. So now they're, now they're on the system of, we know when their years.
Okay, cool.
That has a hundred percent been done.
Thank you.
Yep, I know which one, thanks.
I would be for moving that rental to three years instead of two years on the inspections. Any other discussion on that?
I'm okay with that. Streamline it, absolutely.
I'd make a motion to change the rental to three years uh instead of two on the. I'd make a motion to change the rental to three years, uh, instead of two on the inspections.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, any discussion? All four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed.
Okay, my second item, um, is the INI compliance extension. Um, so this property was, um, on the INI list and, uh, was taken over, went into foreclosure and was taken over by the mortgage company. Um, the mortgage company actually, uh, it was late, at the end of the year, um, acquired this and actually paid up all the delinquent INI fees, so it was not certified to the county, they actually cleared it all up. But then we're in the process of trying to take over the property, uh, which is why, uh, we gave them, uh, ninety days to get in there, make the repair. Um, and then we were hoping to remove them. Um, they've had an issue with getting the prior mortgagie out of the property. Um, and I think the email said, is it April twelfth is the date? Um, the ordinance does, does allow for the council to, to grant a waiver from the ordinance. Um, so that is why it's to you, I, I think I gave you a copy of the email, I just said I can't give you more than a short period of time, you'll have to go to the council, so it's kind of in a freeze right now. It's up to you, what you wanna do, um, it's a little bit, we don't have this situation come up the whole time. What we really strive for them to do is to get in there and make the repair. Um, and I do, I do anticipate that's what they want to do, um, but they just can't get this prior person out, um, at this time. So really up to you, I said I would check, um, they know it could be either decision. But they have not been assessed any, they paid everything up before, um, when they, when they acquired the property, that they did make payment on everything that was there, to try to square up the account, and then moving forward, they're just asking for this.
So they haven't made the repairs yet?
No, correct.
But they paid all the past fees or penalties?
Yes, they did.
Okay. So, my recommendation is, um, we gave them ninety days, now they're gonna have to start paying again until they get to make the repairs and get it cleared up. That's more than enough time to, they've had to take care of this situation.
I agree with that, we gave them ninety days, it was a priority, they didn't do it, I think we have to start the, uh, fee process again.
I have no problem with that.
If the mortgage company already paid up the fines that were owed, they've not had a way, a, a delay of finding, correct? They paid it up once already.
But they haven't, they haven't made the repairs.
They paid it up through the end of the year. Yeah, they, they paid up through the end of the year, they anticipated getting into the house in January. It hadn't gotten in yet, they haven't gotten, or maybe it was December, um, I have to look back at the email, but they just anticipated getting in and did not get in, and so that's why they reached back out. We're like, okay, give you, give you some time to, to transition, and then it was like, we can't give you any more time without council approval.
I think they've had adequate time to make the repairs.
Ninety days should be sufficient.
What is, what is the, is it fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars?
Seventy-five. Seventy-five a month.
Okay. And this is a bank or this is a realty company?
It's actually owned by the bank and we work with the Realtor, and then we send, like, the correspondence has been going to both.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like a Realtor handling the transition.
Um, do we need a motion on this?
No, that's fine, if that's directions, fine.
Direction?
Yep.
Start, uh, collecting seventy-five a month from them.
No problem. All right, then, uh, school storm sewer reimbursement, um, the reason I wanted to just, um, ask you for an update. We have, um, if you recall, oh, that was a while ago, probably over a year ago before the project started, maybe even longer than that. We had, um, some discussions at the council level about, we had to relocate a storm sewer that is, um, out on the east end of town that, um, was put in for the new high school back in ninety, nineteen ninety. That storm sewer was strictly for the high school, we have added some flows as the city in there, but, um, we had to take ownership, or the city agreed to take ownership, I should say, because at the time, and that would not allow the school system to own their own storm sewer within their right-of-way. So the school came to us and the city said, yep, that's fine, we'll maintain that for you, um, and own it, I guess essentially. When we had to relocate it for the highway, since the majority of the flow is from the school, we reached out to school officials on splitting the cost of that relocation. Um, it works out to be about seventy-three thousand dollars for each entity. Um, we've reached out again to the city with the final, or the school district with the final numbers, they have some concerns on if they can actually use school funding to pay for that. They seem to, to wanna work with us, but I think their attorney has indicated they have some concerns about paying for that type of relocation and utility. So I'm bringing it back to you on if you have any suggestions, ideas, I, I don't know if the council is interested in paying the school's share of seventy-three thousand dollars, but what would you like me to do?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have an agreement, agreement with them?
No, we never had a formal agreement, we had a meeting with the superintendent and the finance director at the time, and they indicated, yep, we'll figure this out, um, and we'll, you know, give us the final numbers when you have them, and then, you know, we'll figure out how we pay you. Now that the bill is due, that's where, we never did an assessment agreement, we, cause it was, it was a different, when you work with the MINDAT, it was really, according to MINDAT, our responsibility to move them. Um, it was only us that seeked out the school district because we knew back in, in the minutes we found that we took that over for them because of some of the other rules that the state had.
So at this point, it's primary, primarily the, the school that passes it, access or uses it, or?
Uh, it's at least six, fifty, fifty, sixty, forty, or with the school being the higher, if anything, but we've, all of Penn Street's added on there now, so we're draining all that.
But initially, it was designed just for the school.
For the drainage pond in the back of the, what the fieldhouse now is, there was a pond back there. Still is a pond back there.
I think we should be able to work out some agreement, percentage-wise, of what they're use, what they're using it, what we are.
And that's what we talked about at the council before.
You know, rather than split the cost, figure out what forty, sixty, fifty, whatever it may be.
Well.
Charge them that percentage.
We're, we're splitting it fifty, fifty, which I think is a, which is a good deal for the school, but they're not willing to pay that. I, and I don't, I won't say willing, I, I think they're trying, they, they can't find a way to, based on what their funds can be utilized for, they're struggling if they can pay it. I don't wanna say that it's, I think they understand they probably have an obligation here, they're trying, they can't figure out a way to make the payment.
What happens if they can't, I mean, are we then on the hook?
I, I, we're on the hook, or we maybe can disconnect them? I don't know. I don't want it to come to that, but.
It sounds like a no-win.
Can we turn that off?
I don't know, that, that's a, you don't want it to get, I hope we, it does not get to that point, but.
That doesn't fall under all the money we also is giving them for education, is it? Just, just a thought.
Do we need to attend a meeting, board meeting, and?
Um, I have offered to attend, and I, I mean, what would the, what, I guess maybe I'll ask you, what message would you like us to respond back to the school, like, we need to figure out a way to, to do this? Or are we, I mean, we're not gonna accept no payment, is that what you want me to tell them?
Yeah, I mean, fifty, fifty percent, I'd say is fair.
Right.
And I, maybe I, I did tell them if they needed a couple of years to pay it, we would work with them, I mean, and we had talked about that prior to, um, you know, so if it, if it's something about budgeting, I mean, is that okay with you if they say, well, yes, okay, we'll make it work, but we need three years? If I set up an agreement, that's okay?
Yeah, no, I'm okay.
Okay. I will let them know. Um, and then the last item on my list is another thing from the building official, and it's in regarding to building code, change in occupancy. There is a building code that if a building sits vacant for over a year, it requires a building inspection. We have sent some letters out to buildings in this situation, um, without any response. And some of these buildings do become occupied and are used again. So the question I have for you is, do you wish for us to proceed with prosecution in this matter? Or we keep sending letters, but the letters are not being addressed? And the building official has asked me, she has some concerns about some of these things happening without a proper inspection to the building code. And a lot of times it's an inspection, it's done, there's probably nothing, she just needs to verify that nothing significant has changed in the building.
Are we talking residential or commercial?
This, like, the one, one of them we're dealing with now, it's been mostly commercial.
Yep.
And part of the concern of the building official is there are specific standards when you occupy, like, event centers, and there are, um, certain codes that are pretty, pretty strict when it comes to the state level on what you can and cannot do. And her concern is those codes aren't always met, when people are having gathering spaces and so forth.
Do we know they're getting the letters, do we send them registered so that?
Oh, we know they're getting the letters, cause I hear from them.
Ah, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Some of you might have heard from some of these individuals too.
Okay.
The building official is following state code, correct?
Correct, yep, yeah. So I, I'm just asking for general direct, you know, I, I don't like to pursue the prosecution unless we have to, but if that's, you know, I'm asking for your direction on this.
So they're just not obliging the building inspector to come and inspect?
They're just not, they're ignoring the letters, they're not.
Yeah.
So.
They feel as though, uh, they, since they're not doing anything to the building right now, they shouldn't need an inspection until they have a plan in place.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be as of concerning to the building, it wouldn't be a concern to the building official, but what happens is then they do proceed and they, they continue to occupy and do things and events, and then we have a problem.
Yep.
And the occupying is the big thing, I mean, if they just ignore it and then they use that building, what happens when there's a fire or, or a floor?
I think that's exactly what the building official's concern is.
I mean, I, I don't think we can ignore that. If this has been occasionally happened, only needs to happen once. And then.
But sometimes when I send multiple letters, it just doesn't have the same, you know, myself and the building official, it doesn't have the same effect.
Well, I think the building inspector has to have a starting point on any building. I don't see anything wrong with having that inspection to begin with, to say, what can I do, what can I do? They have to have, basically, a point of origin in their following state guidelines.
Yeah, I, I, we reference the building code um, section and so forth when we send these letters. So I just need direction, if you're okay with me pursuing with legal, or if you want me to come back on a case-by-case, if these become an issue.
Do we have some that have been doing this far longer than others? I mean, do we have an abuser who's been abusing and for five years, or are these all one-year people, or, you know? I mean, if we've got a chronic problem, we have to address it. Maybe we look at the worst case and send them the prosecution letter first. I don't know, I, I don't wanna have something happen, and then they say we've failed our due diligence.
Yeah, where does our liability come in, if we're responsible for the inspections?
I can't speak to that.
And we don't follow through, are we liable?
I can't speak to that, that would be, I'd have to check with our city attorney.
And we wanna get our buildings occupied, and I want them to be at least decent. And I think we have to take sort of a hard-nose attitude.
So I'm just looking for direction, I guess.
I would say go ahead with prosecution if that's the case, if they're not gonna be willing to have the building inspected, then next step.
I think it's, I think we have to move forward with it, I mean, it's a pretty easy thing to do, to just let the building inspector come in and look at it.
Okay. That's fine with me, okay, that's, um, I think that's all I have, I hope so at least. Unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Sarah? Old business, update on the wastewater project.
You want me to start, or you?
Yeah.
Again, uh, so we had our meeting today, a monthly meeting with the contractor, the engineer. We didn't have one in January, as you know, they quit in December because that's when it got cold. They had planned on coming back February-ish, uh, Rice Lake, the subcontractor on lift station was gonna, they've now redone their schedule. And, um, they were gonna do an interior piping in the lift stations, they've now redone their schedule due to other jobs. And they're gonna wait till spring to come back on the lift stations. On the project, you know, like we had said, they're out on eighty-fifth avenue, and they did all the low ends on sixty-two here through town. So that's where they left it last year, so basically they got from eighty-fifth avenue out there back to Foley. They might come and redo the, uh, laying lift station, that's one down on Brittany and County fifty-one in March, everything is sitting over in Geisinger's shop for that. So that might happen in March, depending on weather, just to get it off the list. The swamp, we gotta go across the swamp, we mentioned that was too wet, they couldn't do it last year, it's gotta be done by, uh, June first due to our friend, the, uh, Blandon Turtle, so, uh, otherwise they have to wait till whenever for that, so you'll see that there. Well, they said their plan right now, they plan to meet here mid-April, Geisinger, start pipe again, and they're hoping to bring three crews. And we had one, two here, they're hoping three, could be two to three, but possibly four, so he said, say you're gonna have three and that's where it'll be, so they're gonna hammer it out. They're bidding on a couple of jobs right now, and they're hoping to get, so they wanna get here, get done, and move on in life, so. So, that's where they're at there, probably have an update next month, but right now, besides maybe that lift station in a month, you aren't gonna see much pipe work or anything till April sometime, mid-April. Basically, they're, you know, wanna get out of the frost, especially if they're in a road ditch, they don't wanna be digging frost and trying to pack it back in there, and then you gotta fix a road or something like that, and so, any questions on that part of it, I'll let Sarah do the other.
Um, we had a really good trip at the, to the Capitol, um, and met with a lot of officials. There is discussion on two bonding bills. We don't know, I, I have not heard any firm confirmation, and correct me if anybody's heard anything else. Um, but there was some discussion on possibly splitting up and doing, there's a lot of like critical agency funding that needs to happen, like our P-SIG money. Um, and they talked about Democrats could possibly push one through if they paid cash. Another one, they would issue debt, which needs the, um, Republican support, so we're still kinda seeing how that turns out. I've been talking to Schultz, he calls every few days, it seems like, um, which is good, he, um, we also talked about some special language if the timing doesn't work out and something gets stalled out, very good support so far, I think Mayor Brash has gotten very good response on that to see if there's another option where we just get paid back, um, on our debt, our debt gets paid down if the funding comes in later. Um, so, we're kinda working all sorts of angles, but, um, there's a lot of bills getting pushed through, but I haven't seen anything real serious or close to the finish line regarding bonding, so.
Oh, there is some committee.
We'll keep an eye on that and we'll keep you posted. Um, trying to think, oh, and then just a couple items, we're working with the county on odor control structure. Um, they are proceeding with, um, turning back an old piece of right-of-way. Um, there's a process to turn it back for the township, and then the township will turn it to us at the city for that odor control structure. So that is in moving forward, um, and we anticipate that process to be complete by mid-March. Um, so county's been great about trying to work a way for us to, um, get that permit and that, um, structure ready for building this spring. Um, anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson's been doing very well representing the city on that, so I do, and Kopinski too, uh, you know, so do give him a plug.
Yeah, the, the commissioners have been very, very. Yeah, the, the commissioners have been very, very good as far as making sure we're getting this completed. So, um, yeah, we're really appreciative of that. If there's any other questions, we can answer those. Otherwise we can move on.
Any other questions? Uh, discussion on vacant council member position. So in your packets, y'all got, there was three, uh, applicants and, uh, before the meeting tonight, I did a quick, uh, everyone got all the names of the individuals. They created them one, two, three. And if we're gonna have a clear and concise winner, we appoint that person right now. We do not have a clear and concise winner. So after the meeting, I would like to meet with the other council members. Can't do that?
Nope, definitely.
Huh?
We have to do it at the open meeting.
Well, that's not the plan.
Have to be down in full public forum.
So do you want me to, uh, where do you want me to go forward with this then?
You, I would recommend you discuss if there's additional process you'd like to go through. Or, um, you can discuss the candidates. That's all public information on who applied, but you have to have that in an open council meeting setting. It's not privileged to close discussion.
Okay.
So you can, you discuss candidates who you prefer. You can, that's all public. Um, but you can also discuss if there would be another step of the process you'd like to do. Such as interviewing, questionnaires, you know, anything like that we've seen in the past.
Personally, I came prepared to give my opinion on all three op, on all three and explain why I came up with it. I feel we need a commission, or council member.
Anyone else? Good tonight?
I'm good.
Good tonight? Okay, so we did a stare method, one, two, three. Uh, lowest point total be the highest or the candidate. So Brittany had six, Brandon had seven, Gerard had eleven. So I guess if there's a recommendation, I would say Brittany Radke. Um, if there's someone has any other feelings on this, um, let's discuss it now.
How did we get those numbers?
Everyone went one, two, three.
Yeah.
So when you add them up, some got one, some got two, some got three.
Okay, and I put mine down. This is my first choice, this is my second.
Right, that's what everybody did, right?
Okay, I just.
Yep.
It was.
And they're all here for anyone to look at.
So do we want to give our opinions?
Sure.
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
The first one on my packet is Gerard Bettendorf. And the way I felt, I had one feeling with my heart that his dad did the sewer system. He worked on this wastewater thing and while two more years, you know. But my downside with Gerard is I think it makes our new mayor have difficulty building his basis and his way of dealing. So I did eliminate Gerard. As far as Brittany goes, I think she's got it well together. But I also believe she's got a pretty big schedule and I know I was surprised how much work comes along with being a counselor. And I worried about that. Therefore, my number one was the Franz and Bank guy. Or Falcon, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Brandon.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry for speaking up.
But that, he would have been my first choice.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, my first choice, uh, there were very good recommendations on both sides. My first choice, Brandon Voight. He had some very good, uh, credentials, been ten years, uh, in the city. So we should know, uh, what we've done. He should kinda know what our aims and goals are. Uh, I recommend that we keep Brittany on file. Uh, very good, uh, resume there also. But I'm looking at longevity and, uh, that's why I kinda chose, uh, Mr. Voight from Falcon Bank.
Well, my choices were, this is similar. When, uh, Brian Weiss passed away, I looked at, um, experience and Gerard does have the experience, especially for everything that we've done up to this point. But I think there's one demograph that's missing on this council and that's the younger generation. I support Brittany on this because she brings, in my opinion, she brings the facet that our town is growing. And with her on the council, she has that demograph for the people that want to stay here, that are gonna make this home for the next twenty and thirty years. That's why I support Brittany.
Uh, that was my, excuse me, that was the same thing I had voted for with Brittany, uh, Brandon second, Gerard third. Um, any other discussion on this? I'd entertain a motion for, who would you like to have on council?
I'll make the motion that, uh, we appoint Brittany Radke.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? With no second, the motion fails. Is there any other motions?
I move that we, the Falcon guy. I'm sorry.
Brandon Voight.
I'm terrible with names. If you don't have a dog on a leash, I won't remember you. My watch wants to hear it.
Motion for Brandon?
For Brandon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Uh, all four say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm for it, aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. Brandon Voight, new council member.
We'll wait to swear him in next meeting. If that's okay with the council, just to make sure he's up to speed.
Sure.
Okay.
Any new business? Any new business? Anyone for open forum? Anyone for open forum? If not, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.